Well, thank you everyone for coming tonight. We really appreciate it. One of our requirements with this Community Development Block Grant program is to do public participation and public outreach early and often. So we're doing it more, we're doing it earlier this year than usual. We already had one meeting a month ago and now we're doing one tonight, although this is actually a public hearing, which is a little more official. It requires earlier advertising and is one of the requirements of our funder, who is DHCD, Department of Housing and Community Development. So as you'll hear, Peg will talk to you about the, what makes a project eligible under this program. For the most part, a project has to be shown to meet national objectives, one of them being that it's helping to remove slum and blight in a slum and blight area. Another is that it helps people who are of low and moderate income. And to be able to do this, we have to set up specific target areas within our community where we actually have to do surveys to show that there's concentration of low and moderate income people in that target area or neighborhood and that there is, we have to show through photos and surveys that there is some in blight conditions in an area before we can spend the money. Another thing that we try to do very much, and we've learned that from our DPW director and others, that it's really good idea to leverage funds against other available funds. You get more, so the sum of the parts is greater than the individual items. So working with the DPW director, we met with both Heather and Matt a number of times to talk about projects or needs within her purview. And so you'll hear that we're going to be, one or two of those projects is all about leveraging funds that are meant for roadways and funds out of this pocket of money. So that's really all I wanted to say, just give you a quick overview and Peg, our CDPG coordinator, will take you through the rest of the presentation. Thanks.
Thank you, Rosemary. I do have slides over here, which will be dropped into the broadcast for your convenience, for those of you on this side of the room, if it's easier, you may want to move over. But you also have a PowerPoint handout that you can reference, same slides, just smaller and not in color. Also with us, for your reference, is the target area map. If anyone wants to come up and get it at any time, please do. There's a sign-in sheet that's gone around for everyone to please sign in. And we'll go ahead and run through the slides quickly. As Rosemary stated, high-level overview of what the CDPG mini entitlement grant is, based on a socioeconomic data formula through the state that allows us to be eligible. This is reevaluated every three years. At some point, should the town become in the position where it's no longer eligible, it could still apply for CDPG funds through a competitive grant. We are receiving on average $125,000 a year. And as Rosemary pointed out, we have to meet three of the national objectives. In the last two decades, we've mostly focused on housing rehab and infrastructure. Our target areas are, we have the downtown in the middle, that's slum and blight, to the west, in the west gate, there is the Globe Village, our newest target area. And then the two that are based on low to moderate income data are the Morris Coombs and Worcester Henry. This is a quick chart that just shows the amount of communities being funded and the amount of funding available overall. The point of the slide is to just show that the number of communities being funded has increased and the amount of funding over time has decreased. And so if you look at the yellow, it's the amount in dollars. As you can see, the inception of the Community Development Block Grants back in 1974 spiked briefly and then, as you can see, dramatically declines over the years and the number of funders, funded, funded communities continues to increase. And so that impact that we feel as individual communities seems to diminish over the years. Onto the next slide. This just shows by pie chart, the activities and how we've spent our funds from 2009 to 2018. Again, the majority of our funds have been spent on gray, which is infrastructure, and brown, which is housing rehab. Proposed projects for this fiscal year 20 application, which will be due in February, are housing and code enforcement, economic development, commercial rehab, infrastructure, public facilities and planning. And we'll just drill down to each of those topics. We have the department heads, for instance, for the health inspections department to speak towards the code enforcement and we have the DPW director to speak towards the infrastructure. Housing and code enforcement. You have your part-time building code enforcement officer and 60% of your health code enforcement officer currently funded by the CDPG grant fiscal year 18 will be funded in the fiscal year 19, which we're entering. And we propose doing the same for fiscal year 20. Economic development and commercial rehab, we propose signs, awnings and facades, which we are funding for our current fiscal year 18, $44,000. Fiscal year 19, $60,000. And we're looking to do the same in fiscal year 20. Infrastructure, we're looking at West Street, full-depth reconstruction on the lower portion, which is in the target area, adding sidewalks on the west side of the street. And Foster Street and Hamilton Street to mill and overlay adjacent to Main Street. Public facilities project and planning, McCann Fields, previously named the Henry Street Fields, we're proposing the following, fencing at the backfield, new backstop netting, front field, shade structures or dugout, new scoreboard with an electrical, with the electrical connections, and then the design for a press box, which will include adding bathrooms. This one, I think, is helpful to just read the background. Popular space in town for baseball, softball, basketball, et cetera, adjacent to the Worcester Henry target area, serving low to moderate income residents. Thanks to previous year's CDPG investments, the town was able to do some improvements a few years ago and completed design, but was unable to afford to go forward with the project, the full project as designed. If anyone recalls, it was a $1.3 million design. In the interim, the town invested in restoring the basketball courts and there's, for most of you, you saw the cover story through the TNG that highlighted the refurbishing of the basketball courts. And we've recently appropriated money to replace the playground structures. So these are all in addition to. So I should have jumped right to this PowerPoint slide. This helps, pictures are always good. So this demonstrates those shade structures for the dugouts, you know, whoever's playing at the fields does not have any shade from the sun. The backfield, the fencing hasn't been replaced, though the adjacent fields fencing has been replaced, would be a nice compliment. The design, to design the press box and add a bathroom is, we don't know what the future costs will be, this is a good first step towards that. And then the new backstop netting, as you can see, well, if you can make it out in the pictures, needs to be replaced. So this is the hypothetical budget. Code enforcement, $60,000 for those, again, part-time and the 60% of the full-time. The commercial rehab, $80,000. Infrastructure, $440,000. And that's a, again, as Rosemary mentioned in the beginning, that's leveraging the town's dollars or the Chapter 90 money that would be used for the roadwork. Public facilities and planning, $100,000. So that would be for the playground, all the, excuse me, McCann Field amenities and planning. And then 145 for administration and program delivery, which covers 100% of my position, 100% of the administrative assistant position and 30% of the director's position. And part of the purpose of this public hearing is to go into the ongoing year's grants, but I'd first like to jump into the fiscal year 20 application for any public hearing comments or dialogue. Why don't we start with Andy, if you'd like to just quickly elaborate on why the need for code enforcement through the CDPG?
When I was hired in the town of Southbridge, the, one of the goals that was given to me was to address blighted conditions in the town, the rundown conditions of many of our buildings and trash on the streets, all of the, all of the stuff that just contributes to people not wanting to move into town, basically because of the feel of the town. So we took on a lot of that through the health department, but there were programs that we could institute that we didn't have resources to institute. One of those programs was a program under the 780 CMR, which is the building code, and it allows for annual inspections of all kinds of assembly uses and certain types of commercial buildings, commercial buildings including multifamily homes. So we took a real good look around town and we saw that we were going in as border health under complaints and noting that handrails were falling off of stairs and fire, fire activation devices in the corridors weren't working. So we looked at going proactive on that rather than reactive, because we kept running into it. The way to go proactive on that is under 780 CMR, the 110 inspections, which allow us to do annual inspections on multifamily dwellings. So we approached CDPG and said, look, we don't have the resource to do this, but it's a golden opportunity for us to get in before the blight occurs and get it fixed as it's going bad, before it goes bad. We have in excess of 70 houses in this town that are blighted and vacant right now and innumerable houses that are occupied and blighted, holes in the eaves, broken railings. So we approached CDPG to see if they could help us get the resources to start addressing these problems before they became problems. We started it 18 months ago with Bill Cantel. Bill started the program, developed the program. It's been a very successful program. We do 125 buildings a year out of 600, because we do these once every five years. Of the 125 that we approached, I believe we are over 100 that we have been successful with and doing the initial inspections and getting the orders out and moving those forward. We are working on the 25 non-responsive ones. But it's, it's a program that allows us to attack the blighted conditions, mostly in the target areas. Most of our multifamilies are in the target areas or immediately adjacent to. So it applies for the program. The program gives us the opportunity to address the blight before it becomes blight. So this is a program that we definitely want to keep alive. We like what we've seen so far. We like the results of what we've seen so far. Attached to that also, we are not allowed to go into the residences, because the, we have a right to go into common areas, that is the owner's house. Going into the residences, that's the tenant's homes. We need individual permission to go into those. So working through the health department, with the demise of the landfill, with the closing of the landfill, we lost our health inspector and we lost our opportunity to get inside these, the actual living conditions, the conditions that will contribute to people's illnesses, people's, you know, rampant cockroaches are going to contribute to asthma, poor living conditions. It's just, it gives us the opportunity, by keeping the border health agent alive, it gives us the opportunity to get inside the apartments on complaints. So the total program is a proactive, reactive program, but it allows us to get the best observation on the most, I mean, the most expansive number of these multifamilies. Truly a program for less than 10% of the CDPG program. I think the benefit way outweighs the cost of this program and I really would encourage everybody to continue to support this program.
And if I can just mention, DHCD, our funder loves this, because they see this as small money and as a preventative, stop the bleeding, stop the properties from becoming distressed and deteriorated. So you're spending, just like you would with your own home, the more you put off projects, the more you're going to spend on the long ones. So they absolutely love communities using this money for this purpose. And it's very common for communities to not have the capacity to do these kinds of proactive inspections. So a lot of communities do this, they use these funds for this purpose.
I do want to add, we are discussing the potential of creating another target area to be able to expand the areas where the code enforcement can pursue.
Okay. Looking forward to that.
Yes.
What did you mean when you said we lost the health inspector when we lost the landfill?
When the landfill was here, they funded 71% of the health inspector's salary.
So you're just talking about the funding.
The funding for the.
Where was your health inspector?
We did not, because, again, I approached CDPG and said, is there any benefit to keeping the health agent in the CDPG program? So threw some clever and thankfully, it's not on the town's general anymore. It's not on the immediate tax, obviously it's still on the tax dollars, but it's on federal tax dollars, not the municipal tax dollars. We managed to keep the position at minimal detriment or minimal impact to the town.
But the health inspector is mostly a spot in the land?
Nope, we have a landfill monitor that is 100% funded through the landfill and we had a landfill spotter who was 100%. The reason that the health inspector, our housing inspector was funded by the landfill or significantly funded by the landfill, was because we added the title of recycle coordinator to it. And therefore, it was a benefit that the landfill was offering us while they were making profit in town, because we were maximizing or attempting to maximize recycling and therefore keeping that out of our landfill and saving them space. So, thank you.
Any other comments before we invite the DPW director up to speak about infrastructure? No?
Hello, everyone. For anyone who doesn't know me, I'm Heather Blatton. I'm the DPW director here in Southbridge. And as you can see, that the CDPG program has been quite interactive with the infrastructure, some of the infrastructure work that has gone on in the past 10 years and is planned into the future. So the West Street is adjacent to one of our target areas. The lower half of West Street is actually in a target area or right adjacent to the border of the target area. I'm sure many of you are aware of the condition of West Street. It is one of our major roads in town. It has been on our plan to rehab for a long time. By leveraging the money with Chapter 90 money and CBG money, it allows us to move this project forward by jointly funding the project between the two of them and get the whole street done. Although the CDPG project will basically fund the lower part, Chapter 90 funds will be used to fund the upper part. Therefore redoing the whole street, providing a much better street in town, allowing us to do projects elsewhere instead of having to use all Chapter 90 funds on West Street. The Foster Street and Hamilton Street might look a little strange to everyone, but if you are aware of what we are doing in Chapter, in FY19, we are doing Main Street. So with Main Street being done, these two streets will be directly adjacent to Main Street, but won't be done. What else is happening is in the future, near future, right after that, we will be doing our TIP project, which is our downtown circulation project, which is federally funding, also attaching to both these two streets. So the idea here is to do the improvements on those two sections to allow that bisected area, so we won't have good road, one section a bad road, another section a good road. It will allow us to be, have that all connection in. I don't know if anybody else has any questions. We, I think, I think that gives you the good sense where it is. We might be looking in the future of doing the rest of Central Street, which would be another adder. But Central Street has a little bit more issues. We'd have to look, it's not just the mill and overlay, we'd be looking at sidewalks and things of that nature. And that also depends on additional future development before we make any decisions down there. Questions?
You're saying the lower part of West Street is a cutoff point?
I'd have to look up. It's, no, no, we're not, that's what I'm saying. All of West Street will be done. One big project, some fund, from West Street, from the top, from South Street all the way to 131 is planned to be done. The funding part from the CDPG is only a part of it. The rest of the funding will be coming from Chapter 90. So that, when we talk about leveraging projects, it's the same thing we're doing in a downtown resurfacing project and lighting and street project. By combining funds, you're going to get a larger project and actually a more efficient project by combining the two funds together. It's a lot more expensive to do, to do a smaller area by area. When they get out here and they're doing it, it's a lot, it becomes a lot cheaper. There's some efficiencies there of doing a larger project. Dave?
Thank you, Heather. Real quick, Foster Street, part of the TIP project is Foster Street?
Correct.
So are you, is it going to be half-half or is it, you know?
We would go to where the TIP project is proposed to connect. So it would, it would connect basically that section near the library to basically close to where the railroad tracks are. So it's a very small, there are two smaller areas of mill and overlay. When you do a mill and overlay, you have to get basically to own a minimum amount to make it make sense. It's a small mill and overlay project.
Whoever's contracting that out, or, sorry, the state, once the state figures out how far they're going to go down, then.
Well, we know that, based on the plans.
If it's 2021, 2022, we're looking at for the TIP?
2022, 2023.
2023. So Foster, for the CDPG funds, would take us to 2021?
Correct.
Okay, thank you, that's all.
Mr. Marquetti?
Well, the funds aren't available until 2020, so we wouldn't, we'd be starting the engineering in late 2020 to be worked on.
Probably 21 construction season?
Yeah. Yeah, so we're still talking a couple of years out in the, you know, but that's what, they have to put in the grant application and it takes a quite, you know, they put it in February, they won't even hear that they have it until September.
July, we're going for the contract signed until October.
Yeah, so.
There's a big delay.
And then it'll be, like she said, most of the work will get done in 21 and the grant will expire in December of 21.
Now, I'm assuming the West Street project, you guys are going to be planning to try to get this done in the off-school season?
As much as possible. Unfortunately, because of the timing of when they get the money, it's not always feasible. So there's a lot that they can do construction-wise, when the kids are in school or things of that nature and have to work around the bus schedule. But because of timing of funding, it's not always, that's not always going to be feasible.
Do we want to look at the, you can just speak to the McCann Field?
Sure. Thank you for joining us, town manager.
It's not the PP needs.
And so we just reviewed the fiscal year 20 application and had both Andy and Heather speak about the code enforcement and the infrastructure. And so now, as Rosemary suggested, we'll move on to the fiscal year 18 and 19 for the purposes of grant monitoring.
Do you want Heather to speak about McCann Field first?
Oh, excuse me. Yes. Do you want to speak about McCann Field?
Hard to try.
Okay. And I do have with us, not that anyone necessarily wants it, but there's the master plan that was created for the redesign of McCann Field. This is the design that was 1.3?
At least.
At least. And so.
Right. So as, as Peg did speak of before, there was CDPG money used previously to redesign McCann Field. After the design was done, the conceptual design was done and the process since it were put out, there was a determination that we couldn't get enough funding to be able to move forward with that project. But yet, some of the elements in that project have tremendous value and would be a tremendous improvement down there and could be done for a considerably less amount of money. That plan included relocating fields and repositioning fields and things of that nature. And as soon as you start doing that, expanding and changing a lot, that becomes very pricey. But some of the ideas in that plan included dugouts, included potential new fencing, or, you know, well, when we looked at the fencing down there, there's four-foot fencing that barely is standing up in different locations on that backfield. So we visited the area and tried to select pieces out of the plan that we said, you know what, these still have value and they can be done within the budget of money that we have. That included the shade structures, which is something that I know the people that work, that use the field down there are saying is something they really like, because they are sitting out in the direct sun when they're playing. And looking at this press box, when we visited it, it didn't look so bad from the front side, but when we went around back, we found that the stairs were falling down and there was different issues with it. And we said, you know, it's, it's probably time that we look into what can be done out there so that this can move into the future and have an improvement.
Is the scoreboard in it?
There's not a picture of the scoreboard, because, but that includes a new scoreboard for the front field. It includes design of the press box for hopeful, maybe subsequent year, the next year's applications. The shade structures, the scoreboard, the netting and back of the, the backstops, you can't really see it there, but it's kind of torn, so it needs some new netting. And the fence at the smaller field.
So if I could comment on this, right? So back when I came back a few years ago, the field was, I think, disgraceful. It was sad to leave it only because it just needed massive amounts of work. So we needed the money to do this more than $1 million project we talked about, that was designed in the CDPG grant. So we're moving forward piece by piece. Basketball courses, semi-air, right now, brand new, that's red and redone. We fixed some of the fencing, which frankly, wasn't as nice as I hoped. We cleaned up areas and painted the playground, put in the swings and stuff and added some more mulch and stuff down there. We cleaned up the fencing around the baseball field, took down all the wood there, they fixed things. I mean, it's been piece after piece of trying to improve that park. And these are more attempts to keep improving that, to gradually keep building that park up to make it more and more respectable and that. So that's, it's sort of a piecemeal plan to get it back to where we should have been all along.
Questions?
Now, are we ready to move on to 18 and 19?
Yeah, I think so. So these are, remember, I mentioned to a couple of you that the, when we say fiscal year, the grant fiscal year is a little bit, it lags. So we're, we apply in the tail end of a fiscal year for that fiscal year grant. So the projects, the grant money that we're currently administering are fiscal year 18 and fiscal year 19. So we receive the fiscal year 18 grant money probably somewhere around October of 18. Right? Yeah. And then fiscal year 19, we're just coming up, we're just starting to use that money. So there's always kind of a lag time. So we, part of this, the requirement of administering these grants is to have public hearings, not only to get your input and the public's input on what we're going to propose to apply for, but also to notify you of what's happening on the grants we're already administering.
So just briefly, fiscal year 18, I did bring Central Street parking lot map there, if anyone's interested in looking more closely at it. We're spending right now $56,000 in Activity 4D, the code enforcement, $44,000 in Activity 5C, commercial rehab, $71,000 Activity 6A, infrastructure, 600 plus in Activity 6E for the Central Street parking lot, and $63,000 in Activity 9 for administration. So this is consistent with the current year's application, with adjustments to certain funding, with the exception of what the specific infrastructure project is. Central Street parking lot, we're currently in the midst of Phase 2. This was a multi-year grant project. Phase 2 is the flat work of the pedestrian plaza. We've had amendments to date to transfer funds from administration over to the parking lot project to be able to fund additional engineering and construction costs. And also an amendment to extend the contract to June 30, 2020. And to date, we have hired Nunez companies to do the flat work. They were recently awarded the, the contract and have ordered the granite curbing. It's intricate in its curves and the way it gets puzzled together. Unfortunately, because we are so late into the fall season, there is a chance that this may have to be postponed until the spring.
Just a question, I think, the lineup?
No, we're waiting for an update from the existing fiscal, yeah, the fiscal year 17 Central Street parking lot closed June 30, with the exception of some electrical work. And B&amp;W paving misplaced their subcontractor, Lipinski, and they misplaced a light base that will be moved as we speak.
It is moved.
It is moved. Thank you. So that's good to hear. We've been waiting for that last detail. And then also for the load center to be put in by National Grid and for Lipinski to hook up so that the lighting is illuminating our parking lot, which will be nice. So here we are with fiscal year 18, flat work between now and the spring, landscaping in the spring. We also learned from Opakam Land Trust that we'll be getting some potential trees donated towards the Central Street parking lot, which would be a welcome relief to our budget. And then fiscal year 19, ongoing grant. Fiscal year 19, we literally just executed the contract on our half and are waiting to get it back from DHCD. They'll then release the funds and we'll be able to go forward with the Main Street project. Right now, the Main Street design is in the midst of, it should be almost at 30%. We're waiting for that next meeting and that will be for a signalization and full-depth reclamation from Everett to Pine.
Correct.
And so within the target area, I had said Everett to Marcy in the town council meeting, because I was thinking more, again, near our. meeting, because I was thinking more, again, near our target area, but it goes all the way down to Pine. The administration is significantly less in fiscal year '19 because we've gone down to a part-time administrative assistant in the office, and that will be consistent for fiscal year '20. Any questions about the ongoing grant years? How we could improve them? Any feedback? Any appreciation for DHCD's funding?
Very appreciative.
Yes, we're all grateful for these grants. None? With no further comments, we're going to close this public hearing for fiscal year '20's application, fiscal year '18 and fiscal year '19 ongoing grant years. We want to thank you for your participation. We'll be having another public hearing come January or end of December. All right? Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.